Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the work session for August the 26th, 2025. We're going to call this meeting to order. Call the roll. Alderman Barnhill.
Present.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Caesar.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
Ice Mayor Pod.
Present.
Alderman Baggett.
Present.
And the mayor's here, so everybody's present tonight. Next item is citizen comments and I have no cards for speakers other than the ones on one item on the agenda, so we'll go to item number one. Item number one has been requested to be moved to the September the 9th meeting, so we'll skip over that and we'll just immediately go to the development activity report. There's Catherine. Sorry we didn't let you know about number one.
She knew.
I knew.
Oh, you did? Okay.
She facilitated the communication.
It is that time again for your quarterly development activity report. And with this one, since it's the second quarter, it'll be a little bit of a longer presentation. We will be going over the first six months of the calendar year, so from January to June 30th of 2025. We will also be talking about the fiscal year because that began July 1st of 2024, and we closed that out as well on June 30th of this year. So we'll be doing a lot of our usual, the permitting activity, we'll be covering impact fees, housing, construction costs, as well as talking about some trends and really shouting out some notable developments that were permitted and even completed this fiscal year. And then something new that we are adding to the development report is really providing you guys an update on what staff and Development Services Advisory Commission have been working on as a result of the development customer survey that took place last fall. There's been a lot of work that's been going on, and we're committing to at least updating you guys quarterly with this report. All right. So at least start with the calendar year. So with permitting activity, on your screens, if you look on the far right column of that table in 2025, so far, we've issued 577 building permits, 2,725 trade permits, so that's your mechanical, plumbing, and electrical permits. And we've also issued 201 fire permits. And you'll note that there's only two years' worth of data for this one. This was a new permitting process that started up back in 2024. And this was really, as an attempt to really separate the fire suppression part out of the building permit and really streamline that process for both staff and for the applicants. It's just such a large amount of permits, so I've started adding them, and you'll see more of that trend data as we continue on. But I do want to say that if you look at the five years where we usually are at, the six-month mark, we're pretty on track. We're, development has still remained strong but stable, and you'll also see that reflected in the fiscal year. Next, I'll move on to permanent impact fees at the six-month mark. With permit fees, these are fees that the Building and Neighborhood Services collects when permits are pulled, and it's based on the type of permit, whether it's residential or commercial. And those fees come in to help offset BNS's operation costs, and they go to, straight to the general fund. And so, so far, we've collected $1.4 million in permit fees. Road impact fees, we've collected $3.7 million. Water impact fees, it was about $865,000. Sewer impact fees, we've collected about $2.5 million. And facilities tax is about $1.1 million. And if you look on the pie chart, it's just a really nice visual to kind of see where a lot of the impact fees come from, and that's going to be your roads and sewer. That's our, that's our really costly infrastructure, and so therefore, it's not really surprising that takes up the biggest pie, part of the pie. So if you want to see the trends on where we're usually at, at the six-month mark, you will see, and this is again, I want to reiterate, in the fiscal year, impact fees are not the best way to evaluate how development is going because it is so dependent upon the type of development that's getting permitted at that time. So you see that valley and that really high peak. A lot of the times, that's dependent upon multifamily and off, in large-scale office space. So, but you'll see that with roads, we had a peak in 2024. We're still pretty good in 2025 with $3.7 million in the first six months. With sewer impact fees, that's that second line. Again, you see a very similar trend with facilities tax, that's that third line. You see that's been actually quite even between this time in '24 and now. And then with water impact fees, you'll also see a slight increase from 2024 to 2025. Next, I want to talk about housing. So far this year, we've permitted 156 single-family dwelling units, only eight townhomes, which is a bit strange. However, what's really happening is we've had several developments in the past few years that have just been very heavy on townhomes, and they're finishing getting built out. These are your Lockwood Glens, your Waters Edge, they're finishing up. And so, we're just not seeing a whole lot of townhomes that are continuing to be built. But with multifamily, you are seeing 211 units that were permitted so far this year. That is mostly from the West Haven active adult community that pulled permits, so that's going to be a couple hundred that we'll be seeing. And associated with construction values with residential, we really see this as the level of investment in the community, so this is the construction value of everything that we've permitted. That's about $151 million in residential, about $376 million in non-residential with totals to about $528 million so far for this first six months, which is pretty on track to end how we did last year. Next, I'm going to move to the fiscal year. Again, similar chart with permitting activity, if you look on that far right column, for 2025, we issued 1,223 building permits, 5,544 trade permits, and again, with the fire permits, we issued about 371 of those. Again, when you look at the five fiscal years, these are full 12 months of data, it's still pretty stable. This is the second highest year in the last five, it's just below fiscal year 2021's numbers. This is not nearly as high as we were a decade ago, but it's still very strong. And we're seeing that reflected as well in the construction valuation, which ended on fiscal year 2025 as $884.5 million. And that was about a 2.6% increase from where we were in FY '24, but if you look at previous year's data, we saw massive increases in the construction valuation between 2020 and 2025, so it's still really good. The level of investment that's happening in the community is still very high. When you look how we finished with permit and impact fees in FY '25, with permit fees, it was about $2.5 million, which is in the range, like a normal range for Building and Neighborhood Services. We tend to take in about $2.5 to $3 million a year. Road impact fees, it was about $5.7 million. Water impact fees at $1.2 million. Sewer impact fees at around $3.9 million, and facilities tax ended just over $2 million. If you want to see how that looks over the last decade, I was able to pull information all the way back from fiscal year 2016, and this is where I want to reiterate that impact fees are not a good way to measure the actual level of development activity because you'll look at that very top line as road impact fees, and you see those high peaks and those low valleys. When I show you the housing trends, those peaks and valleys very closely correlate to the amount of multifamily that gets permitted in that year. And then you'll look at sewer impact fees, we saw a sharp increase in fiscal year '24, and still a pretty high number in '25. That next line is actually facilities tax, or, yeah, that's facilities tax, which has remained pretty stable over the last, I would say, seven years. And at the bottom is water impact fees, which you saw a steady increase starting in '23. I do want to note with sewer and water impact fees, we are now on year two of the new impact fee methodology, so that is a big contributor as to why you see that big increase in, starting in fiscal year '24. Oh, and I also want to mention that this does not at all include the new road impact fees. That went into effect in July, so this data, this is all the previous road impact fees. And then touching on what went under construction in FY '25 with residential, we permitted 313 dwelling units. This is mostly in subdivisions such as Fields at Reese Farms and Poplar Farms. We also permitted 71 townhomes. This is still pretty good, but it is lower than what we usually do. We usually kind of settle around 100 townhomes. And multifamily is 247 dwelling units. Again, that mostly is from the One Development in West Haven, their active adult community. Commercial space, we added about 222,000 new square feet of commercial space, and I've highlighted some of the big ones. I know the one that we're all excited about, In-N-Out Burger permit, pulled its permit for their headquarters this year. Williamson County Innovation Hub also pulled their permit, and they'll be constructing, I believe, right by Franklin High School. And also, I did want to shout out the Carousel at the factory, they pulled their permit and actually completed this year, and so that was really exciting to see. And then lastly, on the fiscal year, I'll touch on the housing trends. And just kind of how I noted with the road impact fees, you see those peaks and valleys. That top, that dark blue is your multifamily. So as you see throughout the years, those same fiscal years where you see a lot of multifamily is usually where you see those peaks and road impact fees. That middle color, that middle color is your townhomes. And that bottom color, that light blue, is single-family. So if you see over the last 10 years, the, like, the scale of development has gone down a little bit, but it's been relatively stable, I would say, especially since, if you take out multifamily especially because that's just huge swings, you'll get a lot of consistent, especially in single-family, and you get a bit of consistency in townhomes.
You got a question, Alderman Baggett?
If you'll go back to that one.
Yes.
So I want to make sure, because this doesn't specify, this is number of permits pulled.
Yes, yes, so.
So different from approvals, and I think.
This is different from approvals, yes. This is all that's pulled permits.
What's actually happening.
Happening, yes.
But not necessarily when, like, we approved a development.
Exactly.
So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
So lastly, I'll touch on the development survey follow-up. Again, the staff is now committing to providing an update at least once a quarter on the internal efforts to address those core recommendations that the consultant made following the development customer survey. And there's actually been quite a lot of activity going on. And the first one I wanted to address was staff and the Development Services Advisory Commission really talked about developing small surveys, customer satisfaction surveys, something short and easy that we can get out to design professionals and contractors in real time, get real data, and it won't be too much of a hassle to fill out. We have two previews, these are just drafts, we really wanted to get your feedback if you were okay with this, to test out. We have two questions on it. It's first, please provide a rating of your experience, and that's, you get to rate between one and five stars. And then the second question is, do you have any additional feedback for us? And we leave it open. They can put as little or as much as they want, and that's it. We want, and what we are proposing is that we could test drive it. We could have QR codes available in the reception area in community development building, and also have the survey link in automated emails that go out at different points of the development process, whether it's when plans are reviewed, or permits are issued, or inspections are completed. That way, we can get real-time data right as it's happening about a customer's experience.
Alderman Berger.
Name and company attached to this as well?
We're making sure that this is an anonymous survey.
Anonymous?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great. Excellent.
And then there's been two other main things that I want to touch on that staff has been working on. We've established a development process focus group, and this group was established in the summer, and it was, its goal is really to take on that last recommendation that the consultant made, which was to take apart our processes and really examine them for accessibility, effectiveness, and efficiency. And so this group has been meeting at least monthly to really talk through and kind of see what that looks like. We've already started doing an exercise on single-family building permits to kind of test drive how this would work out, and I believe the discussion has been very productive, and we're going to try and build on that. And also, we have development maps. That was something that also came up with working with the Development Services Advisory Commission, is how can we make sure the most real-time, accurate, and easy-to-access data on new developments or developments that are going on in the community, how that can be easily accessed by the community? And so, we've also been working as a little, as a small task group, it makes up of planning, Building and Neighborhood Services, budget, IT, communications. We've been working at redesigning maybe some of the existing development maps to try and enhance its accessibility and automation. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Mayor. Alderman Barnhill.
I wonder if you could go back on the impact fees, and not necessarily on the screen, but we went through fiscal year '25, and now we're under the new impact fees. If you were to overlay the new impact fees on the last year of the old, can you do that?
Yeah.
Do that. Let's see what the difference is in the two, because I remember the great deal of discussion on the new impact fees, and we found, I guess, grandfathered three years and did six years of entering into the new fees, but I would like, I'd just like to see that, see what that does. And what, because it should be, it should be significantly greater if we did what we were, we set out to accomplish. So overlay the new fees onto the fees that came in for fiscal year 2025.
I can do that.
Alderman Caesar.
Same with the impact fee question. On slide, I think it was slide number six, actually, it's fiscal year, so it is, in fact, slide number six, the mid-year, mid-calender year fee trends, and it's more of a clarification of the comparator.
Yeah.
'23, '24 are full year, and '25 is year-to-date?
So these are, all of these are comparing apples to apples, so it's January to June, so it's six, first six months of every year compared to each other.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Anybody else? Great report as usual. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to item three, which is Addendum II, City of Franklin Contract 2013-0041 with Williamson County and Chartwell Hospitality for Conference Center Operating Agreement for Cool Springs Conference Center. Oh, Christine, I was looking for you and didn't see you.
I must have got here quietly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 1997, the City of Franklin, Williamson County, and the owner of the Marriott Cool Springs Hotel entered into an agreement for, for the hotel owner to manage operations of the Cool Springs Conference Center, which was under development at that time. In 1999, the Cool Springs Conference Center opened for business in the mid, middle of that year, and then in 2013, the term of the agreement, the operational agreement was extended until October of 2027. We are here in 2025, I'm looking to extend the term through October 2037, which would be an additional 10 years. Of course, the event business is a long-term business. Certainly, there are planners that are be scheduling events past 2027. We're already working beyond 2027, but this is a longer-term business. There are also, it's advantageous for the operator to, to also look at extending that term, if that was the desire of the two owners of the conference center. The operator of the conference center, for practical reasons, is best served by the hotel owner as well. There are shared mechanical systems of those two buildings, or actually, one large building. Mechanical systems, the kitchen, the laundry are shared between the two operations. There is also a relationship between booking events, as well as booking hotel rooms, that is best served by, by the operator. Since 2018, Chartwell Hospitality has been the owner of the hotel and the operator of the conference center. In addition to their staff on site, the Chartwell Hospitality has their corporate office here in Franklin, and they closely support the onsite staff. We do have Michael Sanders, who is with Chartwell Hospitality's corporate office, he was here tonight. The Williamson County Commission plans to consider this extension on September the 8th. There are no changes in the fee structure for the operator, and we did include some history on the operation, the financial operations of the, of the center in this packet. If, if there's any questions, either myself or certainly Chartwell is representative, if we could answer those.
Alderman Berger, do you have a?
Thank you. And I see Michael's here, thank you for being here. How soon are we slated to vote on this? Because I just want to talk through a few things with Chartwell, I think that we need to just look at.
We, we do have considered, we were looking to go on September the 9th, the day after the county commission votes. Eric, do you?
Yeah, so they're going to have their, I think their budget committee looks at it late August, in the next week or so, and then it would go to the full commission on September 8th, and you would consider it on September 9th. This is a continuation of the existing operating agreement. As, as Christine referred, the operations of the hotel and operations of the conference center are very much intertwined.
Right.
And this allows that to continue, and, and you see the positive results over many, many years.
Yeah, I just want to know, so we're doing this, and the contract is up in 2027. I know they need to know, you know, so you could, planning purposes, but also, we're extending it for 10 years.
That, that's a shorter extension that was done, than was done in 2013. Of course, the original agreement was for, I believe, 14 or 15 years in 2013. It was a little bit shorter, but this is a 10-year extension, and we, we thought 10 years, I mean, talking with our counterparts at the, at the county as well with Chartwell, that a little shorter, it would be good for the, the parties because certainly, it's a little bit of mature business model early on. You're just getting started, and you're getting into that market, and now planners know about us and, and want to be here, but we thought that 10 years was a, it was okay to be a little shorter than the first two agreements.
I love our conference center, and I think Marriott does a great job for us. And, but, but we're missing millions of dollars in conferences here because of the limitations. And I'm just not comfortable with the 10 years, but I could get there, I just need some conversations.
Yeah, let me.
And I do notice to have a better conversation than this.
Let me help address, I think, where you're going. The potential for expansion of this.
Yeah.
Site would absolutely generate an update to the operating agreement. This provides a baseline of where you are today and how we share revenue and run the operations. So the, this does not limit the potential to explore expansions and facility updates. In fact, they're completing a renovation this month.
Right.
That, that has, they've had to go dark for a little while while they do that, but they're completing that renovation here shortly, and will be, be back in business. So I don't think anything in this agreement, nothing in this agreement precludes the pursuit of expanding and, and finding ways to meet additional business opportunities that aren't, you know, that we're not able to capitalize on today.
Okay, that, that helps, and I just want to make sure legally, between our parties, that there is nothing in there legally that limits us from moving ahead, even though we have that agreement that says, well, we have this agreement, so we cannot do anything. We cannot move ahead with any plans or expansions or anything that, that Chartwell County and the city would agree to. So if you assure me.
Another component in the agreement, Shawna just reminded me, there is a, at the five-year point, so the midpoint of this 10 years, there is a.
Review.
A review of the party, with the parties, of where we are, where operations are, where this agreement is as well. So it does build in some ongoing consideration. They did do some additional market study in conjunction with us looking at this extension that shows, you know, strong positioning of the existing operation to continue to generate some positive, positive results that it has been, but there's also the opportunity of what an expansion might bring, and, and that's.
Right.
Further capital decisions for us in the county down the line, but this is an important thing to kind of, kind of continue on. There are some important reasons for the operator in terms of some of their financing to have this solidified now, so this allows us to keep that baseline going and continue to explore other opportunities in the future.
I'll be satisfied as long as we don't hem ourselves in legally.
Yep.
And they don't hem themselves in legally with us either, because that's not what they probably would want, but that we just have the agreement and that we can move forward with trying to capture some of those millions of dollars that are leaving our county and our city every, every month and every year. So, okay, thanks. Appreciate the conversation.
And I think Mr. Stuckey made a good point in that a lot of this renewal has to do with them maybe being able to get a little better financing.
Sure.
And, you know, if it's a shorter window, you know, it doesn't give them much advantage.
That's a good point. Good point.
Alderman Barnhill.
I would like to know then, if we're losing, as Alderman Berger has said, if we're losing millions of dollars a year or a month, whatever it was, how many days are we actively, is that actively in use? You got 365 days, what's it in?
May I just clarify that?
Go ahead, Alderman Berger.
Don't you misunderstand, they're booked, they're busy, they're doing great, and they're filling it up, CVB is filling up, but we have larger parties that want to come in here, larger conferences of thousands of people, they cannot, so they're being sent to Murfreesboro, and they're saying, being sent to Nashville. My comment was not to say that, that's sitting empty or we're not using the conference center, it's very busy. Yeah.
Pardon?
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because that certainly wasn't, that wasn't necessarily the way I took that, to mean that there's days vacant and we're losing millions of dollars by having open dates at the conference center. But if it's being booked 90% of the time, 95% of the time, is it?
Well, I would just share that I, I agree with Alderman Berger, there's certainly larger, we, we can only hold certain size groups with the facility we have now. However, our operator is filling it with the groups who they can, who they can get, and, and we, we have some very great groups coming in, however, there is a seasonality to this business, so certainly, there are certain months that we typically have, have a loss. But we consistently, for the fiscal year, with the exception of three full years since 1999, we've had positive returns to the city. And so, while you have seasonality, and there could be opportunities for some different groups, if we had different types of facility, a little bit, you know, with added facilities, a little different configuration, the, the seasonality of it has not kept us from, from having positive results, and, and that's something that certainly, a lot of, I mean, most government-owned conference centers don't have positive results all, you know, over this long period of time with only three years of losses, and those, and those are years that are understandable. Those are years that were completely out of the control due to economic factors, so.
The graphic is pretty powerful when you look at it. 23 out of 26 years have been positive cash flow, and of those three, one is the Great Recession, and one is COVID.
And the other one was only here.
Had footprints that were much larger than 12 months, but we only had one 12-month period that was, was a net negative. And as Christine referenced, most places, this is the opposite. It is, you're, you're subsidizing it because it creates other benefit in the community, and we're in a position where it is contributing to what we do, and those funds go right into our hotel motel tax and help us do other, other projects, other positive things in the community. So it, it's, it's a very, very successful venture and something we should be proud of. We continue to look at where there are opportunities to maximize it and what other businesses might be out there. One of the things. One of the things the analysis showed us was they're really doing a nice job of maximizing the most profitable events in the, with what they have. But there are things that are missing out in terms of size, and there are some things where they make choices about, this is a little more viable event or a little more profitable event, so that's being chosen over something that's still profitable but maybe not quite as, as much so just because there are limitations of space and schedule.
Moving on. Event permit for Porch Fest out of West Haven. Any questions about that one? Next is event permit for City Farmhouse Pop-Up Fair at Bicentennial Park, November 7th and 8th. We'll go on to item six, which is Resolution 2025-62 to approve Mamie the Mule at Carter's Hill Park at 1221 Columbia Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Lori McPeak is here. She's the Chief Development Officer with the Battle of Franklin Trust. We're very excited that there is an opportunity. This has gone through quite a few of our commissions with the city of adding some more public art, but this will be more interactive and actually a Civil War site. I'll ask Lori if she'd come up, and she's welcome to say a couple of words, but this is also a little bit of a rendering of what you'd see.
This is a miniature Mamie. The real one will be approximately nine feet from tail to front hoof and about five and a half feet tall. So we will have her on, she'll, she's the addition, the final kind of piece to the artillery exhibit, and so she's a great connection for visitors to Murfreesboro earlier in the war, and then, of course, Mule Day down in Murray County. So if we can keep them in this corridor south of town will be the idea, and this is, you don't get to see Mamie on, you don't get to see life-size mammals on many Civil War battlefields. So we know that she was here, which is the only reason why we even considered her. So the artist is Janelle Meyer, who did Harvey in the Carter House Visitor Center and Midnight Sun at Harlins Dell.
So can you say specifically on Carter Hill Park where it will be located?
So she, where we hope to be is in the grassy knoll on the, so she will be north of the Cotton Gin Foundation, and then east of the First Kentucky Arti, she was the Sixth Ohio, so, which is right, the two guns that are there in front of the Cotton Gin. So she's going to be in the grassy knoll. It's kind of a cornered-out section, so it'll draw people in from both the Claiborne Street Walkway and Columbia Avenue, hoping to pull them in off of the main drag further into the park.
Did she know she's the Sixth Ohio Mule?
She does. I've been carrying her around for like two years now. So if she didn't before, she does now.
A little Southernizer, if that's what you mean.
We appreciate you welcoming people from Ohio and mules from Ohio.
Yes.
So when, when will she be installed?
She, so she'll need to go to the foundry, so we were waiting for final approval before the artist went ahead and did the full size, but we hope to have her in the foundry by November. So if all goes well, we will have her installed about the same time that the visitor center opens.
Oh, wow. Perfect. Thank you, Lori.
It's just the next item. I'm still standing here for the next item.
Oh, you got the next item. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm kind of daydreaming then. How about Resolution 2025-63 assigning naming rights to the Noon Rodeo, Rodeo Plaza, Rotary Rodeo Plaza?
So, thank you. So this is just a resolution, kind of, we've shared with you the plan. We're excited about this partnership, and this would be the Noon Rotary, Franklin Noon Rotary Plaza in Jim Warren Park. So that's what the resolution shares. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You'll also see some things in the packet that show you a better rendering of how that plaza is going to lay out. Our team's working with this. It's going to really be a great addition to the park, and this naming rights helps support that, but gives you a little bit of an update of the progress that's been made, and we're working hard to get it delivered in a timely basis for, we're looking at next, next spring, hopefully, right?
Correct. Correct. So we'll start work on some of the construction by this fall, so as far, especially laying out the platforms and things. Thank you. No questions.
Okay. Item A is Resolution 2025-55, Resolution authorizing the execution of City Franklin Contract Number 2025-0253 with Civil Constructors LLC for the Liberty Hills Pond Stream Restoration Project in the amount of $2,376,791.10.
So we've worked really hard with the HOA, and if you remember, we received a grant through the state of Tennessee as part of the America Rescue Plan Act, and this essentially takes the Liberty Hills pond and converts it to a stream. We have to replace the culvert, and then it fixed some downstream items. Overall, for the construction, we're going to receive about $1,333,333.33 in grant funding. Chris Franklin is working to try to see if there is additional funding available to cover a little, some of the overruns that we have, so we'll continue to pursue that and keep the board updated, but we are excited to get rid of this pond and convert it back to a stream.
It needs some help.
Go ahead, Alderman Berger, you're recognized.
And start the?
We're going to have a pre-construction meeting hopefully next week because we literally have 12 months to get this thing done, so.
The timeline, right?
We're scheduling it really quick, and 12 months should be more than enough time, and Civil Constructors is a very qualified company to do this work.
Okay, good.
So this is in the ARPA timeframe, so that's, that's why there's a sense of urgency. So this is on both agendas tonight, so we can get going.
Okay, Resolution 2025-59, Resolution of Work Construction Contract, City of Franklin, 2025-0232 for the State Route 96 Murfreesboro Road Access Control Improvements Royal Oaks Improvement Project to Nickel Mill, Nickel Company LLC with a bid amount of $753,190.
So this is the median on State Route 96. What we did in addition to the median is we actually, through a traffic impact study that had come in, looked at east of the interstate to take those shoulders and convert those to through lanes and turn lanes to try to get more capacity on Highway 96. We're also making some minor turn lane modifications on Royal Oaks where we had some site distance issues, but we were very pleased with the bid price we got, and Nickel is very qualified to do this work. And this one is also a rush because asphalt plants are closing, and with a four-month construction timeframe, we want to issue the notice proceed, and they're prepared to start work. And this work will all be done at nighttime, with the exception of the work on Royal Oaks will be done during the daytime.
Where's the work at Royal Oaks?
This is at the Aldi.
Alderman Berger, you're recognizing that.
I'm sorry. Where?
This is at the Aldi where we had the site distance issue with the turn lanes.
Oh, we're fixing that?
Yes, we're fixing that as well.
Oh, great.
Very minor tweak to it, but then it allows the site distance and improves the safety. Yep.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Would you please state again the start and completion timeframe?
It's four-month construction contract, so we plan to issue the notice proceed in early September and hope to be done by December timeframe, but the contractor, through talking with them, they want to get it done sooner, and they think that's achievable.
Okay.
So I'm hopeful November, before the holidays.
Thank you.
Item 10.
No, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, Alderman Barnhill.
Paul, when we discussed this several months ago, there, there was two different methods of doing the, stopping the left-hand turn, and one of those methods was, I think, $84,000 or something, and I don't remember the price on the other, simply because this $753,000 has had additional stuff added into it, has it not?
Yes. Yes, it has additional stuff added into it. Yes.
Okay. Because when December or whenever it was, all of this, when we discussed this, and there were some comments made, and I, and I think I said that this is a throwaway project. The, to stop the turning, left-hand turns, was a throwaway project, and that the $84,000 product, method would do the same thing as the more expensive one. How much of that $753 is add-on to what we were discussing when we were in, when this was in December or whatever it was of last year? Do you remember?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. It's basically milling and resurfacing the shoulders east of I-65. I'd be happy to get you that number. It just takes some time to go through all the quantities to see what was added there in Royal Oaks.
Now, that would be fine, except for the one thing. If we vote on it tonight to pass it.
Yep.
It's, it's rather irrelevant as to what it is then. I'm sitting back here looking at something that's already passed, and I'm questioning the expense on that. Was the original, was the original expense the most inefficient, what the most inexpensive way? Was it 80-something thousand dollars to do that?
It was substantially cheaper. That number sounds right, because they were going to provide us the materials to put the temporary delineators up. I think the concern was, one, the aesthetics of it, and, two, the long-term maintenance of the delineators, of having to replace those out in the median.
My memory on it was it was around 70 to 80,000 on the delineators, and this number was pushing maybe a half million, but we weren't entirely sure because we needed to bid it, and then we've added a couple other projects to it. So it's in that ballpark, if that helps.
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Berger.
It's added about $375,000 to it.
Yeah.
And I think if you check your numbers, that'll be pretty close.
That's pretty close.
This is the highest accident rate in our city, and we know we're not going to get that interchange done in the next five years, but I don't consider this a throwaway in all respect. I do not consider this a throwaway project at all. I don't think the delineators would have done exactly what we needed it to do, and if it saves one life, I'm good. And the money that we put towards this is going to curtail a lot of accidents, even much more than delineators. You can just drive right over those things. I saw, unfortunately, down in Huntsville, Alabama, somebody drive right over a delineator just a few weeks ago and go right into another lane, in a concrete thing. You're not going to do that. So anyway, just needed to say that, and also about the pricing.
Well, I appreciate Alderman Berger's comments and what she's had to say. The fact of the matter is that either one of those projects, either one of the methods accomplished the same thing, and whether Alderman Berger agrees or not that it's a throwaway project, it is a throwaway project. It may not be three years, four years, five years, whatever it is, it is a throwaway project. It's not a project that's there. It's a project to make a temporary restraining, the left-hand turn to cut down on accidents, and either one of the processes, either one of them, will do the same thing. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support this, and I'm, and I'm concerned that we've got the extra added into it that's making it a little bit more difficult to determine how much the one cost is versus the other, versus the additional cost of what you've added into this then. But that's fine, and I, you know, the public needs to understand, and I want them to understand, that I don't think that it's necessary to spend $753,190 on this particular project, when we discussed it back in December, and it was 84 versus 300, 400,000, whatever it was. So that's my, that's my take on this, and when it comes up for vote tonight, I will not support this.
Yeah, the one thing, we did talk internally about the additional scope of work, and based on what we saw, the additional milling and paving would substantially help that 96 corridor, and we thought that that was a kind of a no-brainer in our minds, and maybe we should have brought that back. That's on me, I apologize.
No, you shouldn't have brought it back.
I told him to do it.
Yeah. You shouldn't have brought, you shouldn't.
Alderman Baggett, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm trying to get that, the cart before the horse now, Mayor. With the horse before the cart.
Or the mule.
Whatever.
Mamie.
Mamie. I appreciate Alderman Barnhill's comments. I've thought about this as well, and what, is the I-65 interchange just hypothetical throwaway? Of course, it's not hypothetical. One day it will. Now, was that on the 10-year T-Dot plan?
It's not on the T-Dot 10-year plan, but at the MPO, they have it in the next 10 years to potentially be slated for funding, to do something out there.
So then, once we get it, you know, I don't have to reiterate for this board how long it takes, and even if that is, MPO is not the T-Dot prioritization, I sure hope we have an interstate interchange before, but it's not five-years throwaway. I mean, make no mistake, it's 15, 20, unless we do something, take, city takes action, we as a board take action.
It's a fair statement.
I mean, it doesn't, it's not on the fast track.
No.
And so I think that, I agree, I think that these things, after five years, these temporary things are going to be damaged. I do think there are, I've pulled out that Waffle House, I'm going the right way now, but I know others that don't, and shame on them. But they could pull through those little temporary things sometimes, and if some of them get, no, let's get it done, do it right, and then I think it will improve traffic on there, on that, on that section, because I'm always stuck for someone to go get their biscuit at Hardee's going to the interstate. Like, let's get it done, do it right, and I, look, if I thought this was really going to be a five-year, three-to-five-year throwaway, all right, maybe I'd think about the temporary. But the reality is, it's not. It's going to be 10-plus years, and we're going to have our streetspeople out there having to fix it and putting their, you know, safety at risk, getting out there to, you know, these little things, we can just get it done and get it done right. And who cares if T-Dot, I mean, I care, but what if T-Dot doesn't approve this for 20 years, and we're out there with these temporary things that are ugly when you go on these other towns? Like, let's do it right, keep people safe. Now, if this wasn't the most dangerous intersection in the city already, maybe I'd think about it differently, but this is permanent, and I think it ensures the citizen's safety, so I think I'll support it. And so what were the new things that you've added on the, how is that, you didn't bring it back? I'm not questioning that, but I'm curious what the improvements, what we're modeling those restripings that, to do, because I know citizens are asking about that intersection or the interchange. What kind of improvements do you see happening as far as traffic time and that kind of thing?
So some of the developments that was proposed east of 96 were showing more increased failure, and this was bringing it back, further back into compliance. It still fails at the peak hours, but it was allowing us to facilitate and approve development east of 65, and I apologize, I don't have those exact numbers for you.
Is this some level, you know, we talked about previously having different levels of F on some intersections.
Yeah, the interchange was still pretty bad, but all the other intersections was substantially improving because you're taking, instead of two lanes, you're taking three lanes through that signal, and you're able to shorten the signal timing and the phasing, and it was
I would like to know, I think that, I'd like to know what to expect.
I can get that.
Because I think people are asking a lot about that right now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Thanks, sir. I appreciate the comments that are being spoken tonight. I will say this, what's supposed to be installed is going to be uniform to what we already have in place, as far as the concrete medians that are right there in front of the Regions Bank, for example, and on the opposite side of, the east side of the 65-96 interchange. So it's going to look the same right there. The, if I understood this correctly as well, this is also adding, is it one additional lane or extending that lane on that right-hand side if you're driving from east to west to get onto 65?
We're trying to extend them.
Extend it?
Yes. Extend the stacking.
And how, how much is the extension?
It's probably about 100-foot.
Okay.
Is my, off the top of my head, and what we're doing is shrinking the transition zone and extending the turn lanes to allow for as much stacking as possible, east and westbound is what we're doing that on.
Okay. And this also addressed the, preventing individuals from making U-turns at intersections where they, it would cause backup or cause, just cause traffic to stop. So the new signalization will actually activate that U-turn at the proper location.
At the proper location, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I am in support of this, and it was a good point. This is where we see the most accidents in the city. We certainly don't want to see any fatalities, but we, we need to move this forward, and the additional items that have been added to this are necessary, because we're not going to see it in 15 to 20 years. Alderman Caesar.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the dialogue here tonight. I am concerned about a three-quarters of a million-dollar spend for a road improvement project that could be done for $70,000. However, I've been reminded by members of my family, sometimes you have to make the front door look nice because people are coming in, and I believe this is a primary corridor into our city, and I think it, it deserves to look at a certain level, and I think this accomplishes it. One piece Alderman Potts mentioned, it'll match the other curbs, and I believe this is a mountable curb, so it's not going to be kind of a, we had discussed it as a mountable curb, so that emergency vehicles in, if necessary, could move over this curb structure. Is that true? So will it not look, is it not going to be your square?
Yeah, it'll be mountable, so it won't be exactly square for, really for fire, police, and ambulances. and ambulances.
And so as somebody that frequents this intersection, I don't remember a time recently that I've driven down ninety-six east towards sixty-five and not seen at least one person trying to make this dangerous turn. So I don't think we're discussing whether or not this is a problem and a risk and a danger to our community. I think the one question that was un, maybe unanswered for me, we discussed last time this came up, when was it, Alderman Barnhill, was it December time, around Christmas? The business owners along the east or the north and the south side of ninety-six, and there was some concern even from the folks who own that hotel, the motel that's been there for decades, and they've been a good, a good steward of our city and provide a great service, I believe. Have we had any more interaction with the business owners on the north and the south side since deciding to move forward with this? I know there's been a couple of plans, Alderman Berger presented one, and, uh, to, to help reduce the negative impact. I can, I can tell you, I don't know who goes to Hardee's in the morning, but they always double stack before they make that double left-hand turn. I worry about those businesses and making sure that we're making them aware of this change and how it's going to potentially disrupt especially the morning traffic for those folks.
Yeah, we've talked with a handful of them, we're offering them no left-hand turn signs at their entrances and restripe their entrance if need be. That's really totally up to them if they want us to do that. Um, and they all seem to be accepting and understanding of the bigger cause, a safety issue, and that the U-turns is going to accommodate them as much as possible. And if there's additional requests or concerns from them, obviously, yes, we are going to try to do our best to work with them and, and help them. To some degree, some of those businesses need to come together and try to work together to come up with a solution, because if they did, I guarantee you, we'd be right back here to present that to y'all.
And, and I, I would say this is a public plea to the watching audience at home. If you frequent those businesses and you hit it on the morning or on the way home, please communicate to the managers and the owners of those businesses so that we can make sure that we don't spring this on them, which is my fear, in December, and we start milling in front of their property and they, they get surprised by it. So help us, communicate this outward.
We have a list of stakeholders, and we will inform them of this, just so that they're very well aware.
Appreciate, thank you.
Glad you pointed that out.
Alvin Berger, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't forget that, um, this additional work that we're putting out there, um, to move the traffic, the thing is, we have got to move our first responders and our ambulances. When I sat there in that lane trying to go east, and everybody's coming off the interstate, of course, we're going to have the lights all turn red with our technology, but even if it all turns red, there is nowhere for these people to move over. There's not even an inch. And so the ambulance is sitting there, and I'm like, okay, we're now at forty-five seconds, this ambulance is still sitting there, there's no place for anyone to go. And then a month later, fire truck comes up, and I'm about the tenth car back this time, going the same direction. And so if those improvements, uh, using the shoulders of the roads and improvements help us to at least have a little wiggle room where we can move over and get our ambulances through, it's all worth it.
Yep, and we have a great preemption system, uh, that we've implemented. Chief Baltimore can testify to that. We are working with Williamson County EMS to get it implemented for them as well.
All right, we need to move on. Mayor, one point. We'll make sure that people understand. I don't think, I think this is the, probably the most dangerous intersection around, and I agree with the comments that we are making. My comment is this, I don't think that the seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, a hundred and ninety dollars is a necessary expense. I think we can do better for less money than what that amount of money is. But for the intersection, and it's, we could have already had the no-left turn both directions if all of this had been looked at months ago, it should have been done months ago. All right, we're going to move on to item ten, which is City of Franklin Contract twenty-two-five dash zero two-one-oh. It's an agreement to provide assistance to Williamson County's solid waste department during adverse conditions. Nate?
All right, good evening, everyone. How y'all doing? Um, the purpose of this agreement is to provide support to the other party's solid waste, uh, department during adverse condi, adverse conditions. Services included but are not limited to assisting with, um, during extreme weather events, equipment loss or shortage, or when the, the transfer station is out of service. Examples of services provided include weather cleanup assistance such as knuckle boom pickup of trash goods, white goods, furniture, construction debris, uh, during the storm event. And then also, if the other companies or other entities' transfer station is out for at least forty-eight hours, we can, uh, request assistance with a compensation provided for these services.
Item number eleven, thank you, Nate, is, uh, City of Franklin Contract twenty-two-five dash zero two-two-five with Erickson Living Properties LLC for developer reimbursement agreement, uh, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, installation of sanitary sewer interceptor. I think that's just an upsizing.
It's upsizing, yeah.
That's all it is, yeah, from eight to twelve.
Item twelve is Amendment One to City of Franklin Contract with, uh, Uliance Inc. for Life Advisor Employee Assistance Program. Any questions?
Yes, this is just our EAP program. We're, um, had a three-year contract, asking for one-year extension.
Thank you. Item thirteen is Resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-nine authorizing use of a competitive seal proposal procurement method for choosing the service provider for flexi, flexible spending account. Mr. Council?
Sorry, this is just the debit card to have a flexible spending account.
And the item fourteen is City Hall Block Redevelopment Update.
So Chris and Kelly are coming up. We'll walk you through an update in terms of where we are with, uh, the City Hall project. Overall, good progress has been made. We've got our first two bid packages under contract and great progress. Chris will fill you in in terms of, of that and, uh, costs that are with, well within budget, so we're tracking well, and you'll get a chance to see that and, and really good progress on the site as well. So Chris and Kelly, take it away, and we have some exciting new images to show you.
Thank you all. We'll browse, uh, breeze through these images real quick, the new renderings, um, and just a reminder, the City Hall is a redevelopment project, and we're not looking at just one building. It is upgrading utilities, upgrading the garage, um, new community plaza, uh, walk-up to the, the community plaza, um, the streetscape on both sides of Third Avenue, the commercial tenant space, and, um, kind of one of the coolest features, I think, is the, the community park on the back end of this, uh, uh, project.
And then we're really excited to show you some of the design progress that's underway. The next few slides show the lighting plan at night, so you can start to get a sense of what it looks like. This one is looking down Third Avenue toward the square, and the commercial tenant spaces are on your right. Next. This is the courtyard between the City Hall on the left and the commercial tenant spaces on the right. And then this starts to look at the interior at our boardroom. Uh, this is looking toward the front, toward the dais, and on the right are windows that look out toward the historic courthouse. Next.
What's that material in the back of it?
It's a very interesting material. It's a, it's a hard felt that's designed for sound absorption, but it can be printed with anything, and so it's going to look like marble. So it's not on our VE list because we never propose marble, but...
It looked like marble. I was like, all right.
But it's not.
No, felt.
I didn't answer this. Sorry.
And next is looking toward the back of the boardroom, out into the foyer, which then leads out onto our public square. And lastly, this starts to give you a sense of what the community park looks like with the sound of the water flowing, with the shaved trees, and the backdrop of City Hall and the commercial spaces. So, turning it back over to Chris.
Currently on activity, this is, was submitted a week ago, right now, we actually are drilling piers, uh, so we're currently tracking ahead of schedule. We've got good weather forecasted, we've had good weather, shot rocks being installed. We have, um, Second Avenue, some utility work going in, and then we're going to start prepping for Third Avenue utility work, um, along with the foundations and piers, you're going to continue on.
So excavation work is complete? We have finished that, and that came through very, very successfully?
Yes, we have, we've had a contingency for excavation for any issues, and we actually had one area that was just a small void, and it was a six thousand dollar, roughly six thousand dollars, that was, uh, towards that void of just filling it in with concrete. Um, and it was like ten by twenty, uh, hole, so it was, uh, better than what we anticipated going down that deep.
Do you have questions? Vice Mayor?
Please, sir. Since we've now finished excavation, have we, did we have any water table issues?
No, sir. No, we are currently, um, we've had zero water table issues. We're currently drilling piers that are going down roughly fourteen feet to hit, uh, bearing, um, and the first two did not have any water in them, um, at that level, additional fourteen feet as well. Um, that's, I say we will encounter maybe some, but, uh, as of right now, there's been no concern of groundwater.
Very good news. Good. Thank you.
Um, as mentioned earlier, we have four early release packages, or ERPs, as we like to call them, currently estimating, uh, a total forecasted at ninety-two-point-five million. Uh, one and two were estimated at thirty-point-seven, and they came in actually at, uh, twenty-seven-point-five. And those also hold, um, within those two packages are holding, I, I believe, around seven hundred thousand dollars in contingency and allowance, um, where that, for example, that six thousand dollars, uh, came out of. ERP three is the biggest package, that's all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, MEP items. That one is anticipated to be around forty-one, forty-one and a half million, and the final package finishes, um, oh, did you go, is, uh, around twenty-three-point-four, uh, anticipated. Value engineering, again, this is daily, weekly, uh, it's discussion every meeting, uh, out of my mouth and out of the city's mouth is some areas that we can explore. Currently, uh, in the past, uh, month, we've had three-point-seven million, um, two-point-two the last month, and, um, this month, we just have another one-point-five approved. Some of the key items there were windows, um, looking at TPO roofing, um, uh, the curb and gutter, which is what I would call more of a true, um, VE item. We're not basically changing the design, we just challenged a design issue, um, based on the depth of rock or compaction that was not needed at that area, so we were able to pull that money out. And that's, program, quick, uh, overview, uh, money spent to date, nine-point-eight. Uh, we're going through some pay applications right now towards the end of the month, so that will go up to roughly around ten and a half, um, to eleven, uh, once they get approved through our, our system. Construction, we're at the low, we, we're still looking at a low and a high on these. That's because if you look at the far-right column, you've got nine point, or four-point-nine and four-point-eight million in tariffs, uncertainties, and allowances and contingencies, so, uh, roughly nine and a half, ten million dollars are still kind of just sitting there as, as an uncertainty, um, similar to what we did in the first two packages. We held seven hundred thousand, we've only used about six thousand out of seven hundred thousand. And I think that's, if there's any questions...
The only observation I'd make on that chart, just, you look at that, the low end in terms of our estimate, that's down almost seven million dollars from where we were last time we talked with you, and that, then that upper-end number is about two-point-three million lower than it was last time we talked. So that's, that's good progress, and, and as Chris mentioned, there's significant amount of contingency and tariff contingency that we're, we're still carrying, uh, throughout the project. So, so that's good progress, and, and we'll continue to track that closely.
Alvin Baggett, you're recognized.
Um, a couple of things. One is the, so I'm curious, because we thought there was going to be rock and blasting and different things. How did that impact the cost of the first ERP?
We anticipated, we, we actually didn't anticipate blasting, we were concerned about it, so we never put any blasting in the, in the contract.
Okay.
But we did hold, I believe it was around three hundred thousand dollars for unsuitable soils and conditions, not knowing if, it's kind of a gray area, if you'd have said it would have been rock, we could have used that contingency for that, um, but more, more we kept it because we didn't know how soft those soils were going to be, um, trying to get to the first, the gray area.
So we won't need to tap that allowance, essentially, within the project? So that will kind of return to the, the benefit of the overall...
Correct, and that was recognized, and early on, it was the VE, we were holding kind of the uncertainty of like a million and a half, I believe, and then it was just like, as we got further, further down, ready to bid it, we decided, we don't believe there's any rock, but there may be some unsuitable soils.
Um, there were some value engineering on the soft interior things y'all are looking at doing. If you, uh, it's not in this proposal or this presentation, I don't know, last time you said there might be some cost increases or value engineering possibilities on some of the softs, I believe is what it was called, or the, the furniture and fixture and equipment and, or, what, what is the, so that's a big number of the whole project, which, which the public should know that all this, these costs, right, include all the furniture and everything inside of it, too. This is not just, you know, the structure, this is the whole thing. So tell me, how is that, any progress on that?
Right now, we're, we're still holding true at our three-point-five, three-point-six for all the furniture in the building. Um, we, with the tariffs and everything else, I did show a budget, uh, I, I kind of, now that the construction costs are coming in lower, I increased the soft costs slightly as a range from three-point-five to four-hundred, to four million, just to cover, um, if those costs do increase. So if a chair, we, you know, our, our chairs are coming in at five hundred dollars each, that's just an example, I don't know what they are, but if they're coming in at five hundred dollars each, everything's kind of rising in cost, raising the cost a little bit, so it might be six hundred and fifty dollars a chair. Uh, that's why I moved, when construction costs came down, we shifted some of that money, instead of just getting rid of it in the bucket, we put it in the soft cost.
And this is one of those items we're continuing to look at, and as we get, is sort of a timing...
Yes.
...component here. So as we get closer, we're able to make some specific decisions around actual costs at that time, and there is a, a timing consideration overall, too, about when to pull the trigger. So we are still looking at value engineering options within that, within those options there.
That's correct.
And the timing of it, too, I, I don't think we just want, like, if there's some unused spaces that necessarily you need...
You don't need.
Furniture in it.
Yeah, we can work it in a later budget.
Another thing, I, you said streetscape on both sides of Third Avenue. I may have misunderstood that from the start, but are we doing both sides of Thir, like the cap courthouse side, too? I don't know that I've seen, maybe I have seen a rendering of that.
I think there was some renderings on, we can get you a rendering of both sides.
Yeah.
Well, I apologize, I should have, but I know, I knew we were doing the one on the side of City Hall, but...
The side on, by Biscuit Love and Church, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, or if you could send those, I, I apologize, I missed that. Okay. Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
And with that, the coordination with Biscuit Love and Church is, is, during our OAC meetings, we discuss kind of how that's going to phase and impact, um, Biscuit Love, and we've been in touch with the owners, um, just to keep them up to date on how we're going to do this and how we're going to transition and, and not be, and still have access to those businesses.
Alvin Berger.
Is, so that, that is all within our right-of-way, though, right? All that work that's being done on both sides?
Yes, yes, and that's upgrading some dry utilities and...
Uh, yeah, on the south side, too, as well. Okay, all in one right-of-way.
Yes.
Thanks, that's all.
Okay, item fifteen is Resolution twenty-two-five dash seventy-one authorizing City Administrator Assistant City Administrator Public Works to execute City of Franklin Contract twenty-two-five dash zero three-two-six with Truist Bank, which is an incumbency and client notice agreement to provide retainage portfolio access to the city for the city block redevelopment program.
This is a system access agreement, uh, working with our construction manager.
Correct. So it's really in agreement with the Truist Bank, who's the, uh, the company that Skanska is working with to develop a retainage agreement with. This allows us portfolio access to that agreement, or, excuse me, to that portfolio, um, as is customary with construction projects that we do, so...
Item sixteen is Resolution twenty-two-five dash seventy-five authorizing City of Franklin to join the state of Tennessee and other local governments amending the state, uh, Tennessee State Subdivision Oklahoma Debate Agreement, approving the related settlement agreement. We've seen a couple of these, these are just new entities that are coming along.
Yeah, this is related to the Purdue, uh, settlement agreement you, you agreed to last, um, board meeting. There are subsequent vendors under Purdue that have now entered into the main settlement agreement, but it does require you to enter into a second settlement agreement with those sub-vendors.
Okay, we'll go to item seventeen, Real Estate Infrastructure Redevelopment Districts in Tennessee, policy, policy discussion regarding community benefit, project criteria, transparency and disclosure, and maximum assessments. I would ask that, uh, we hold any questions till after the presentation is complete. Now, I'm going to limit everybody a little bit because I know that everybody wants to talk about this, so I'd say maybe limit your comments to three minutes, whenever you are going to comment on it, and then maybe try to categorize those as far as the areas that were going to be considered with your comments.
So Vern's going to take you through this, and he talked about there being three, kind of three components of it, that the public benefit component, what defines how you would apply this, the related to transparency and disclosure, and then finally whether you want to have some capping or structure to what you would, what you put in place in terms of the amount of assessment allocated to, to future residents and to folks that would be paying for these assessments over time. You know, this is an important advancement. You gave us some general direction last time. We tried to refine that into some specific policy structure, and so we'd love your feedback on that tonight, and really looking hard at how we apply this. You're going to need to have a policy. You're going to have requests on this, the way the state law is structured, developments can come to you, make the request, and you have to respond in a certain timeframe. Having a policy in place provides you a clear framework to work with those, but also clarity out to the development community that might be seeking to use this tool about where you're looking to apply it. To be clear, it is a great benefit to development. It helps them in financing the work that they want to do in the community. And as, as a community, we ought to look at where we want to gain the benefit for providing that benefit to, to development. And so we're trying to provide you with a framework on what that public benefit looks like, and what structure could help you get there. We welcome your feedback on where you want to, where you want to emphasize, and what kind of return or benefit you want to get to the community in, in providing and applying these tools to development. So I'll let Vernon take you through it, and I think our structure might be, too, to come back through in each of those components in some level, too, to get your, get your feedbacks.
That's what I was trying to emphasize, come back on each separate.
Yes, thank you. Take it away, Vern.
Thank you, Eric. Hello, Mayor Alderman. Christine, Betsy, Nats from Bassberry, and Shawna, we've been working on various elements of what will become a policy. And the, the three items that we want to talk about today, oh, got the wrong presentation pulled up there. Yes, let's go back, I'm sorry.
Why don't you, you want to introduce something?
Okay. Is, for, for this, this evening and seeking your guidance, will be the community public benefits and the measurable project criteria. And we, there's four of those, and we had talked about those previously. Another important section is the disclosure and transparency section, because there had been talk about how the initial buyers, thank you, and property owners advised of the district, and what it entails, and what is community related, what is the assessment, but also for future buyers. And this policy section will cover that. And then when we get to the cap on assessments, I'll turn it over to Christine and Betsy to, to go through a couple scenarios, to try to seek your guidance on what you might feel is an assessment cap or parameters that would, would be appropriate when a district comes forward. So, starting out with the extraordinary benefits in community development, these are common in other states' policies, jurisdictions and policies. And for this section, the development shall provide clearly defined public benefits that directly advance specific goals outlined in Franklin's comprehensive and master plans. These public benefits shall be provided by the developer and not eligible for funding through the establishment of an infrastructure development district. Under number one, all five of the, the bullet points we're going to talk about items need to be met to adhere to this section. Those include construction and financial contributions to city priorities. For example, the implementation of multimodal transportation improvements such as greenways, bike lanes, traffic calming measures, and transit supportive features that are in addition to the improvements required to serve the development. They shall be valued at a minimum of 1% of the funded value of the development district. Number two, construction improvement and fi, or financial contributions for public infrastructure in addition to the infrastructure required to serve the development. These should be such as roads, utilities, stormwater facilities, again, valued at a minimum of 1% of the funded value of the development district. Number three, high quality architectural placemaking elements that exceed established base design standards and contribute to a distinct sense of place, as demonstrated through compliance with our current version of the city's development standards. Number four, when applicable, preservation, restoration, and adaptive use of designated historic structures or resources valued at a minimum of 1% of the funded value of the district. And then the last, creation and integration of public art and wayfinding into public-facing areas. Number two, enhance public service and safety. Two of more of the following shall be present to qualify to comply with number two. And these are to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability. The development optimizes public services and community well-being by integrating land dedication, site planning, and infrastructure improvements that exceed minimum regulatory requirements and provide direct measurable benefits to the city's essential service systems. Number one, land dedication for public use. Dedicate at least 5% of the total site area to the city for facilities such as schools, fire and rescue stations, libraries, community centers, et cetera, et cetera, that align with adopted public facility, school plans, and level of service standards. At the discretion of the Board of Mayor, Baron Alderman, an equivalent value cash contribution may be accepted to support the development of a public use elsewhere. Parks and greenways, for developments not designed under envisioned Franklin Village Green or Neighborhood Green Design Concepts, provide at least 20% additional public open space than required by the city's development regulations. Include connected greenway trails that link the regional or citywide trail network with a minimum length of 1,000 linear feet per 50 acres developed. Number three, service, service access design. Designs street and site layouts to enable emergency service access within a four-minute travel time to at least 90% of the residential units or commercial space, or as determined by the city of Franklin Fire Marshal. Underground public infrastructure adjacent to the development, essentially offsite. We already require onsite undergrounding of public infrastructure. Underground, again, all public infrastructure utilities on all roads located adjacent to the development that may not be serving the development and already required to be underground. And then the last, long-term maintenance and operational agreements. Establish funding mechanism, HGA, community maintenance agreements that offset at least 50% of the city's projected costs for maintaining non-standard infrastructure or open space created by the development. For example, we have a predominantly gravity sewer system. If a development includes a pump station, which we are nor costly, perhaps they have some type of maintenance agreement or replacement agreement for that pump station or stations. Ultimately, as I get into the last two, all proposed community public benefits shall be documented, quantified, and aligned with the adopted community priorities as part of the application and review and approval process. The third, attainable housing. When housing is proposed within a development, at least 10% of the total units shall be deed restricted for households earning between 50% and 150% of the area median income. The development shall include a mix of housing types when supported by envisioned Franklin, meaning apartments, townhouse, single-family units to serve a range of households, household sizes, and income levels, with the goal of providing an equal number of deed-restrict housing units for low-income, less than 80% of the AMI, and workforce income families, which is between 80% and 150% of the AMI. When apartment and for-sale units are provided, it's expected that an equal number of deed-restricted rental and for-sale units shall be provided for both affordable and workforce families. The fourth item, when redevelopment is present, one or more shall be present to comply with a redevelopment project. When applicable, the development shall include a portion of the community generally characterized by aging infrastructure, underutilized properties, and generally considered to be an opportunity for revitalization and redevelopment. The development shall include at least 20% of the project area within a census tract or a block group subdivision. Number one, the existing site layout and architecture are not meeting the city's current development regulations. More than 50% of the buildings are over 40 years old. At least 20% of the parcels have an assessed building-to-land ratio below 0.3. A low ratio suggests that the land holds more value than the building. Subsequently, the land is being underutilized. And then where there is a predominance of service parking lots, and when incorporating a mixture of other commercial residential uses into a parking structure will increase the value, revenue potential, and, and create a more vibrant, walkable neighborhood. Again, only one of those needs to be present should we, should someone be interested in a redevelopment project and utilizing this financing tool. Moving on to disclosure and transparency policy, as I had mentioned, the Board of Mayor and Alderman is in authorizing the establishment of a district, is committed to promoting accountability, transparency, and informed decision-making for all current and future residents within the district. To ensure fairness and, and protect the public's interest, the city establishes the following policy regarding disclosure and transparency by developers and sellers of properties within the district. The special assessment debt issuing entity and/or assessment administrator shall review and verify compliance with this policy and coordinate with regulatory agencies, title companies, homeowners associations, to ensure proper disclosure practices are followed. For example, full disclosure of district obligations and assessments. Prior to the sale of any property within the district, developers and sellers shall provide clear written disclosure to prospective buyers of the existing and purpose government structure of the ADD, all current and projected special assessments, taxes, fees levied by the city, including capital improvement and maintenance obligation. Any outstanding debt incurred by this special assessment debt issuing entity that affects the property, and this information shall be included in the purchase contract and acknowledged by a buyer a minimum of three business days prior to closing. Infrastructure and service commitments. Developers shall provide buyers with plain language summary of the planned infrastructure and community amenities to be funded or maintained within the ADD, projected timelines, phasing, and associated completion dates, responsibilities of the developer, any future homeowners association, the city, and the special assessment debt issuing entity. Any known risks, delays, and dependencies that could affect delivery of the development shall be included as well. Public access to documents and records. A publicly accessible website shall be maintained by the assessment administrator or other appropriate parties, so current and prospective homeowners, property owners can assess the following: governing documents, the formation documents, bylaws, et cetera, budgets, audits, meeting agendas, minutes, infrastructure plans, service agreements, debt enclosures, the assessments, the ballots on the assessments. I've been viewing a, a website that, from the state of Texas, with which you could enter the community name, and it pulls up all the assessment districts. Upon clicking on one of those assessment improvement districts, it gives you a plethora of information, all included here, of how it was established, the improvements that were included in the assessment, the cost of those improvements, what the assessments are for each property, and what the balances on each property. It was quite a, a robust website, and very impressive. Ongoing disclosure requirements for resales. Subsequent sellers of properties within the ADD shall provide the same disclosures to future buyers in accordance with state and local laws, and the assessment administrator and other appropriate parties can provide standardized templates to assist in compliance, and that website would be an excellent resource. I am going to turn it over to Christine and Betsy now to talk a little bit about the cap in which we're looking for guidance, and a couple of the examples that have been provided.
Thank you, Vernon. When we were, when we looked at, so the initial 2024 law back in, in the spring, this, this scenario where we actually looked at some sample tax bills, we, we just looked at residential examples, because the 2024 law was just for residential, and 2025 does expand that into commercial properties, and certainly Vernon hit commercial opportunities within his, his presentation. So we will, I do want to walk through line by line quickly, both residential and commercial together. Certainly, tax bills begin with the appraised valuation, and in both scenarios, we do have enough, the appraised valuation that's different. The assessed value for property tax purposes in Tennessee, we do have different ratios, whether you're residential, commercial. Residential's a 25% assessment ratio that's taxable, commercial's 40%. So we walked into, to line B, to, to what is actually the, the taxable amount. Using, certainly since the last time that we were here, both the city and county have set new tax rates. So for this, purposes of this example, these are new rates, the city rate of 29.6 cents, and the county set a rate of $1.30 for purposes of examples in line C, which, that, the low, the, the small nature of the city's property tax, and so many analyses when we look at property taxes, it, it does factor into when you look at outcomes, because of our city property tax being so low, and certainly our, our budget manager talks about the city's property tax. For a city of over 50,000 or so, we, we do typically have either the lowest, or maybe close to be the lowest property tax rate in the state. So when you look at line D, our annual county property taxes due for these two properties are the amounts that you see, 3250 for a $1 million home, 18,980, almost 20,000 for this commercial property. The city of taxes, which you levy that city tax rate before any assessments added, $740 on the residential side, 4,321 on the commercial property. Line F is where this looks very different from what the city and the Board of Mayor and Alderman have been, have authorized in the past. You've always been, the, the city has always been the smaller portion of that property tax, and even in this scenario of a five, five times cap, it becomes the, the largest line on the property tax bill of five times cap of residential, $3,700 for the commercial, $21,605, which certainly adds to the magnitude of that total tax bill. Whether that's a residential property in the ADD or a, a commercial property, the magnitude is, is larger. In both cases, the largest individual line at a five times cap is the, the special assessment line that's levied by the city. And the assessment itself is 48%, just on, you know, just under half, but it is the largest line of, of these three in the, the example. And something that, you know, when we, when we looked at the, the small number of, of these assessment districts that were authorized under the 2024 law, they all, all the ones to date, there's not been that many, but the ones to date have had caps, a little bit different philosophies, they're all residential, they're all for workforce housing, but they're, they're certainly, they, they do have, have caps that are a little different. However, those are in place. Something I just would share that... Something I just would share that if you, if you don't have a cap, because I'm sure a question can be of, why would you consider a cap? And certainly, why did the ones who started in Tennessee perhaps have a cap? And certainly, something that I would imagine was part of that evaluation process is just, and certainly in our case, we are a AAA rated local community, and we have had a prudent debt management policy. We've been a AAA for over 20 years, and having a, but we do have that history even for debt. Even though this debt, if something happens, is not legally responsible for this, from the city, it would be authorized by the city. And so if the IDD is not successful, the city is responsible for collecting these assessments, and that is a, it's the same way the city is responsible. We do, on the property taxes, the county does do the delinquency collections for us, but it's still authorized by the city levy if the property owner does not pay their city property taxes. So you do authorize that collection of an assess, of a special assessment, and that enforcement is something that is the responsibility of the city in the case of a special assessment. So having a cap does fit with the spirit and the alignment of the city is responsible for the special assessment collection, the same as you are for property taxes. And I would like-
I thought Christine did a great job. I just wanted to add that the appraised value on this slide would be an estimated build-out value of the district. So this is not an appraised value of the dirt itself or the land, it would be an estimated build-out value of the district. And the tax rate that we are using here would be at the time that the district is approved. So whatever your current tax rate is, this isn't like a frozen formula. And the five times the city taxes was just to have a conversation. That is not based on any data that we've collected. So don't think that this is like-
Magic?
Yeah, that this is the formula, but we thought it would be good to have a conversation.
We have seen some places use just straight dollar amounts. There's a cap of so much allowed. We chose the use of the tax rate as something you're already familiar with in terms of, from a policy standpoint, as something you're used to establishing, and would you look at some, some variance based on that that helps you set a cap? And it does provide clarity about how far you're willing to go in terms of assigning costs to the assessment. So that's the general thinking, and it's not an uncommon practice. We tried to look at something we thought made sense and tied to something you're used to dealing with and setting as part of your normal course of business.
I would also add, before I open up for questions, as we develop this policy, and these sections are very important, that'll come forth and be included in the policy for you to look at besides the mechanics of how applications are submitted, reviewed, brought to you, and then all the way through the bond issuance and implementation and administration of the district. So the community benefits that I spoke about today were gleaned primarily from a lot of other policies and discussed with various members of our team of what could be realistic for our community, but much like the cap on assessments illustration, we can modify it and change it as we start and as we go forward, as well as the community benefits, as long as we're realizing, if that's your desire, a true benefit from allowing a developer to take advantage of this financing.
Okay, I'm going to start on Alderman Peterson's end and work around, three minutes each, addressing all those areas that were public benefit, transparencies, and capping. Go ahead.
If we're just looking at this thing right here, then it shows that the property taxes for this would be twice as much, if we're using this idea, twice as much as it would be without being in this kind of specialist assessment area. So to me, that seems unbelievable, and that means that the people who are buying these things would be paying this for however long, twice the amount as they would be making, as they would be paying if they were living in someplace where it did not have this little thing, it's now called IDD, right? Then they would be paying half that much taxes all the way through, and to me, that just seems ridiculous. In other words, they're paying all that extra money and still having something that's appraised at the same price.
It's a 30-year maximum, too. You can do it for less, but 30 years is the maximum permitted, and you could choose to do it a different timeframe as well. So we did not choose to address any limitations on the timeframe for the, for the assessment, but that's, that is something for you all to consider as well.
But I'm just saying, that means that the property owner, I mean, if somebody buys a piece of property there compared to buying it somewhere else in the city, they're going to be paying twice as much for however long.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I will say that this is an example based on a scenario, so it had a cap scenario, so the-
That's right, but if you look back at the ones that have happened already, they're like that, too. I mean, the ones in, what was it, Bristol and Knox County?
And then there's been one in West Tennessee that they, they've had caps, they've been flat dollar amounts more than maximum, you know, five times, but we wanted to throw this out as a discussion purposes.
Alderman Caesar.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Thanks, staff, for putting this together. I feel like there, this is a new item, and we're trying to keep it in a small barn before we really understand what the limitations are. Appreciate the shaping of this conversation, but this is a bit atypical for me because I'd rather like to see where it could go, maybe for the first period, before we say this is the ceiling. I guess my question comes back to city's responsibility, and what I've heard tonight and in previous discussions about this topic is that our responsibility ends at the element of us trying to go and collect against this bond if the developer happens to default. Am I misinterpreting our responsibility?
Well, we, there's, there's two, there's the debt itself. If the debt fails, the city is not on the hook. However, if you do have assessments, and it's just the same way as if someone doesn't pay their property taxes, you have, you are following all the steps to remediate that, and certainly with, with property taxes and assessments, that, that will be, you know, all the steps allowed in state law that you have, that you have will be followed. So that, that property owner that does not pay their assessment, they risk losing that property.
And the IDD, who collects for the IDD? Is there an independent board that analyzes it and that establishes the amount, and that goes to collect it?
That's the city tax collector. Now, certainly, the county collects our property taxes for us now. We're not quite sure if they'll continue, if they would be the collector on this, but it's under the city's enforcement if you have to go through all the mechanisms to collect taxes, or in this case, a special assessment.
So we could be responsible for the burden of having to go collect this, and that's, is that the ceiling of our, of our exposure?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's obviously also reputational exposure if you have approved an infrastructure development district and it goes belly up. There are, so when you issue bonds for these types of developments for the infrastructure, there's a variety of underwriters out there that will purchase the bonds. Some have more risk appetite than others, and so I think the goal is to have a high value-to-lean ratio. I know the state law requires two to one, but I think the goal would be to have three to one, so a value that's three times the amount of the lean that's on the properties. And finding underwriters that adhere to that kind of standard, I think, is a goal and will add to the success of the project, in my opinion, and so-
Betsy, I appreciate that, and my time is short, so I want to ask the next question.
Yes, sorry.
Assuming that the free market through the bond issuance is going to be a barometer in this discussion, is it, or are there bonds that will be issued that don't necessarily take as much of a conservative approach?
Yes, there will be.
How does that affect, how does that affect bond rate? How does that affect us as a city if there is bonds that we're not responsible for but that are operating in our community that are low value or high risk?
Right, so, you know, obviously, I hope a lot of due diligence goes in on the front end, and the proper underwriters are chosen that are conservative and, you know, want a successful project.
Who chooses the underwriters of the bond?
It would be the debt issuing entity. So whether, I think in the past, we've talked about, on behalf of board, like an industrial development board or a public building authority, they would be the ones making that choice. And if it's a public building authority, then it would likely be the industrial development board that enters into like a loan agreement with the public building authority. So the city would not necessarily be a part of that discussion.
I have a hard time with this being a new tool and the state setting for some fairly direct guidance with us doing things like requiring public art with, as a mandatory. I like public art before people in the audience get concerned about it, but I worry about making that a requirement. I think we should be more broad, and as these come forward. Now, ultimately, I think this probably puts staff at a higher rate of having to evaluate all these different projects that come in, and we want to be clear in what is acceptable and what isn't. If anything, I'd rather see us put a minimum threshold, and we kind of did that with some of the requirements that we've asked here. I don't see a three or four home development being able to provide a four-minute emergency services response time or improve. I don't see that four-home development putting in substantial public art that adds to it. So we've, we've set the floor. I feel like maybe we've set the ceiling a little bit too low as well.
Agree with some of the things you say, if I may, Mayor.
Appreciate the time, Mayor.
In our research as well, and we, perhaps, that's a, that's a trigger for us to go back. I looked at some of those development districts on the website here, and you talked about three or four homes. The magnitude of the developments, we're talking West Haven-like of the development, and as I stand here before you today, I'm curious and want to see what comes forward. Does a 100-home, 200-home subdivision can come forward, and is it worth that effort to create the district? And those are scale of developments, I haven't seen a pervasive number of those. I've seen some in some of the other states. So I just share that with you. I know Rick's here, and he works on the financing end. This is a developer financing tool, and we just are trying to create the policy, as you said, so we can provide guidance to a developer and their team to develop the model. That includes the assessment. We can evaluate the cost. We can give you a recommendation whether or not it meets the policy, and then ultimately you get to make the decision. And we can remove some, all, whatever you want, but these are what we put together based on the guidance you provided us last time, is to try to provide some measurable criteria that makes it more predictable, is what we try to do with all our development processes.
And I think our thinking on this is you're giving, you're providing a gift to development to use this tool. You ought to expect something back for it. So that bar ought to be substantial. It ought to be something you can say, there's a meaningful public benefit to the, in exchange for the tool we've provided. So there may be other things you want to do, but I, I would caution you about just saying, let's leave it open and see what they bring us. I think you ought to say, we have some expectations that there's going to be a significant public benefit come here. Yeah, you may want to provide some flexibility, I get that, and we welcome that guidance, but I would be careful to not make it so open that you're making the threshold very low. Because I've heard this tool referred to in almost every development that's come up in the last year, both existing, previously approved, things in the pipeline. So you're going, you're likely to see quite a bit, but the more structure you put to it, you probably help clarify what you're looking to get from this. So that's helpful to us to know that.
I'm going to throw a quick question to Alderman Caesar, three questions. Are we on the right track with the public benefit? Are you okay with the transparency aspect of it in general? And what about capping? You know, I found all your questions were good questions. We're trying to focus in on this policy and give some direction to staff, so if you can quickly-
Give me some time to think about those questions if I can.
All right, Alderman Blatton.
Okay, I'm not speaking, then you can fire questions back again. This is like overwhelming to me. I'm just going to be really honest, trying to really understand it and understand how it applies to our community. And everything you said, the three things that stood out to me that I liked, was the service access design, because that has to do with fire safety, public art, and attainable housing. Those are the things that I'm like, I love that we can maybe find a way for those last two to really kind of stick to the wall. But the other thing that I'll tell you, when you think about the state introducing something that's supposed to be relevant to everybody in the state, we never really kind of fit that criteria. A lot of that's because of income level, a lot of that's because of land prices, and so from everything that I'm seeing here, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, it's like, while we're unique, it's like the restrictions and the parameters that we put on things seem to be such a departure from the initial intent of what this was supposed to be. I know it's got to work for us, and I think that's where we kind of get in the weeds because of our low property taxes, because of our high land prices, because of our, you know, the way we are such a popular place to develop. I'm still trying to figure all this out and understand how I feel about it, and much like what Greg is saying, I think we've got to start somewhere, and I know you're saying, but we've got to have parameters, but I think that if, from what I remember, is we accept it as a development by development. It's not like, it's like everybody gets to participate, correct? There's like, one comes to the dance and we decide who gets it?
No, everybody, everybody can submit an application-
But we pick.
And we need to act on it within, we need to present it to you within 45 days.
Okay, I knew there was something.
And you can improve multiple, multiple things, and everyone has the right to come and request it.
Understood. I just feel like we're, we're just, I understand we're trying to protect ourselves, I understand we're trying to do something that kind of gets everybody to the finish line they want. This just feels incredibly cumbersome, and smarter people than me, the rest of y'all have at it, I'm going to listen and try to understand. This is not my gift, but I do think, I'm proud that we're trying to do something that gives people an opportunity that they didn't have before. And at the end of the day, it improves our community in a lot of different ways. I just think what you presented here is overdone. Your three questions, do I get to answer those or no?
I think you did a good job.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Alderman Blatton. The transparency piece, are you?
Transparency on our behalf or the developer's behalf?
On the developer's behalf, all those things that Vernon enumerated there.
That's a lot.
Alderman Barnhill.
I think Alderman Blatton has hit some points that I've been looking at as I've gone through. Yeah, well, let's really sit beside each other to share. I mean, you really can't see us handing notes to each other, so, but anyway, I think she used the word cumbersome, I would use the word overly restrictive, possibly. And when I look at some of the, some of the specifics in this, and we're, we're putting speed bumps as a, as a requirement, construction or financial contributions to city priorities, traffic calming measures. And I'm not sure that I, I'm not sure that I want that much restriction in the, in the document itself. I also looked at whenever we were talking about, there were schools, and I'm questioning and wondering how that fits in, since we don't really do anything for, we don't have any obligation to the school systems, that may not be the right word, but we're not restricted by the school systems, and I'm not sure that that's, and that's just two examples that I'm using right there. So I'm going to look at it closer. I think it needs to, I'm, I'm, I'm not, if I was leaning- I think it needs to, I'm, I'm, I'm not, if I was leaning one way or the other, I think it's probably a little bit overly restrictive from what I would have thought it was going to be over the period of time that we've had. The other thing is this, I appreciate Alderman Peterson's comments as far as the taxes are Unfortunately, when we sit here, when that buyer comes in, they don't, they don't pay any attention. They're just so enthusiastic about getting in. They don't, they'll put their initials on whichever one block somebody tells them to put it on and go from that. So I think we may, you know, I want to make sure that we understand and I understand and that we're getting all the information out to a buyer that we get to them, so they're not just going down through and just checking a block or something other. So those are the things that I look at here. I don't know whether I've answered the mayor's three questions or not, but I don't even remember two of them, so it doesn't matter. I guess I got one of them. I got the transparency part of it then, yeah.
Good job, Alderman Barnhill. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to try to hit on your three questions. First, Vernon, Betsy, Christine, everybody else that's involved, thank you. This is what we were asking for initially when we wanted something to come back to us. It is extensive, and I like what Alderman Blanton was saying. It's a lot to absorb. One of the things that stands out to me, and I agree with what Alderman Barnhill actually just said, is I can picture the 50 documents you got to initial and sign, and you're like just, my hand's cramping up. I've just got to get to the last one, right? And I don't want this to come back to bite us in the end because somebody is just trying to hurry and get through something. But Betsy had said something earlier that really kind of struck a chord with me, and that is reputational exposure. And so when I think about that, I think about the impact to our AAA bond rating. And I want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success, not just for one or two partnerships to help the development move forward, but looking for the next 50 years. So that was an excellent point. I appreciate you saying that. When we, if I try to address the mayor's questions, I do greatly value the public safety aspect of this and dedicating land for a new fire station, for example. I think that the connectivity with the greenways is spot on. That's what we've been asking for to begin with. The art piece, as much as I love art, not every development I think might do it the right way or might bring, bring the best foot forward far as art goes. I did get a little concerned, Vernon, when you made the point about the sewer and having to replace a pump and the maintenance associated with that. That, that actually kind of raised some red flags for me, but you know, as I, as I look at this, this is a tool that our state legislators have brought to us to help us to move forward and to make good decisions. And I'm, I'm just looking at the presentation in its totality, and there may be some wiggle room. I've got a little bit of concern about the cap aspect and the example, I think Christine, you had said it's only, the example is at 5X. Alderman Peterson made the comment about it being four times the tax rate, double the tax rate. Sorry, Alderman Peterson. But I think setting expectations upfront is so important for us to be successful for this. I do remember we're going to have an administrator on, on hand to do this, but it's going to be up to them and us to communicate it. I hear the bell ringing, so I hope I touched on two of the three. The, I'm just checking my notes real fast. Attainable housing, I think it's extremely important as we do build this in. I think that's a missing piece of our puzzle that we haven't had in Franklin before, and this is a good way to have development actually be required to include it. And I think I've hit on most of my points here, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We need a meeting just for this, because it's a lot of, lot of stuff to go through. I've got notes here, I've got notes there, and I've spent a lot of time on this. I'll leave my mic somewhere. So I've spent a lot of time on this, and this is a meeting dedicated to itself. My gut reaction is this is way overdone. We've gotten in the weeds way, way too much, and we're way, way, way too restrictive on this. Just a couple offhanded notes here that I want to go through real quick, and then I'll, I'll share some other things. I think it's a great benefit, and we're talking about great benefit to the developer, but it's a great benefit to our city, for our community, because it's, it's providing infrastructure, really good infrastructure that we need, and a way for people to get that done. Why would we go above the state's 2.1? It's two to one. State's two to one for the valuation. And I don't know why we would do three. We certainly shouldn't be doing five. I think it's way, way too restrictive. The city collects, by the way, the city still collects the tax, the same tax for, you know, they're doing the collection. But we would have it in the contract where we say the city's not liable, and they would likely recoup the cost if there was a foreclosure. We could really put that into the documents. I'm not an attorney, but I figure that could be figured out. We're talking about, we expect something in return. Well, you know, I'm looking at this going, I thought this is a partnership. And if this is a partnership, then I think that it's not meant to be a gift to the developers. In my book, I think it's meant to be a partnership between the city and the developer to get infrastructure in. That's how I look at it. Schools, we are responsible for schools in the fact that when we permit growth, we put more people in our schools, more students, more desks in our schools. So I think it's fair to ask for land for schools. When I lived in Virginia, they did it all the time. Developers always dedicated if they needed a school in that area. West Haven did it. I mean, those are things that we can all work out. Those things should be worked out. I think we're trying to bite this, eat this whole elephant at one time, and I think we do a portion of it, because this is ongoing thing. I think we're going to have to see how it goes. We can definitely need, the transparency, I have no problem with that. But I think we need to be putting less restrictions in order, get this off the ground. This is not set in stone. We can change it. We can, we can come back to it. I made a lot of notes, and I don't have the time to go over it, but I said the two points I'll hit, over restrictive project. I think these requirements are far more rigid than they need to be. I think if we get too rigid, we're going to exclude worthy projects that could deliver significant infrastructure to us and improvements. It could lead to constant requests for exceptions to BOMA, and I don't want that, because it politicizes what should be a straightforward review process, I think. So replace the restrictive checklist with broader eligibility criteria that allows for flexibility. The city should focus on whether a project provides meaningful infrastructure solutions aligned with envisioned Franklin and a comprehensive plan, rather than prescribing exact percentages and property conditions all the time. The last thing I'll talk about, I've got three or four more, but I don't have time. Additional cap on assessment beyond the state, and I'm just going to read my notes. State already provides a strong safeguard with a two-to-one value in lean ratio. Okay, I saw that in there. So the draft policy imposes an additional cap for limiting assessments to five times the city tax rate. Man, you brought that up. This effectively doubles up on restrictions and makes financing basically infeasible for the developer. So in practice, the market assessment, in practice, market should focus natural, on the natural caps, I would think. I'm a free market person. I think we let the market set the caps. And so if the market forces the natural cap assessments, then developers, if we put, if we put our caps on and make it so restrictive, developers aren't going to be able to sell their property. They're going to be encumbered with assessments beyond what the buyer is even willing to bear. That's where I think we're really gotten off the track. So my recommendation is don't impose any additional caps beyond what the state requires and allow the statutory safeguards in the marketplace, basically, to determine the feasibility of that. And I've got a few other ones, and I can go over those later, but transparency of support and competitive advantage, a few other things that the mayor brought up. Ended at that, because my time's up.
Mr. Mayor, can, I think we need to clarify something at this point. The lean ratio is not the same thing as a cap. It's different. And let us walk you through, well, you were combining them, and I want to be clear. The five, the five times cap is not the same thing as the lean, the lean ratio. Okay? We're, we're saying, we're giving you an example. A cap is a very common thing so that you know how far you're, you're willing to go with what you assign to the assessment. We're giving you one construct to look at that is a variable of the tax rate. But the rate, the lean ratio is a different animal. And I think what Betsy was giving is you may want to go high, a little higher than that, just to be more conservative, but, but they're not the same thing.
Right. That's what I was talking about.
The property value.
Yeah, three to one. So the three times, the value of a property is three times that.
The state says two.
Right.
That's the minimum.
But I do, I've looked at underwriting standards from around the country, and the three to one is not underdurable. And it's not.
Yeah. I just don't want to confuse the cap discussion with that. They're different.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
To add what Eric said, if I may, real quick, these, these examples are just static examples, of course, because ultimately, every development is unique upon itself. Its uses, its topography, what type of infrastructure goes in. And the reason to have the cap as a, as a parameter is because then, as a developer looks to make an investment, some of their own financing, some through the IDD, they'll know what the appetite of the board is. So they can tailor that development to meet in that application to make it approvable without, you know, without too much debate, because it pertains to the number of units, the amount of commercial space, the, the type and amount of infrastructure that, that's going to go in. So I just share that, that everyone will be different. Some may come in much greater. And if that's fine, that's all right. We cannot have a cap. Some will come in, come in less.
Alderman Brown.
I'll echo the rest of the board. It's, it's just, it's way too much. You know, I always have a saying or a question, I always ask people, you know, what's the problem we're trying to solve? And, you know, when I first brought this to this board to even talk about, the idea was, let's get a policy in place that aligns with the state law and enables this board, this board, the opportunity to drive certain behaviors we want in our community. And those behaviors were things like, can we get workforce housing in this community? Can we redevelop certain areas of our community that we feel like would really benefit from that? Can we, can we drive areas of great design and placemaking in our community? Like, those were things that we really wanted to see, and every development was going to come and be different and, and add different levels of value. And, and I feel like at this point, we're actually stopping them out at the gate, and we're not even going to get a chance to see them, because the criteria is so restrictive that they're going to be stopped outside or not even applied, because they don't even check all the boxes. And/or what's going to happen is we're going to have this conflict with staff, that they're going to walk in here and they're going to say, well, we, we can't recommend approval because they don't click for the five boxes. And then there's this arbitrary checkboxing, and then there's this conflict, and that doesn't even feel good to us at all, on a policy where we're just all trying to do some really good things in our city. And I agree, there's some benefit, there is, but there's also a lot of benefit to us. And I think we could be trusted to do some really awesome things in this city by having a policy that gives us a chance to actually define some of those things. By having five of five, and four of five, and three of five, I think there's some good things in here, but there's so many of them. And here's the other thing, there's so many of them, do we really want some of these? Like, what if somebody walks in here and says, oh, I, I'm going to choose laying a sewer pump? Well, I really want you to do workforce housing. Well, but I checked this one, and so you got to give it to me, because I checked this box. Well, no, I really want workforce housing out of you. Like, you're almost actually hemming us in by saying, I checked that box, so now you got to give it to me. I think the board ought to be given the opportunity to say, here are, here are some criteria that we're going to use as objective criteria to evaluate. We're going to decide whether or not we think, what we want out of that criteria to award this to you, not necessarily checking such a strong criteria that if they check the box, good to go. I think the transparency is great. Alderman Barnhill said it very well. They're, they're not going to know when they sign the line. Let's give, let's make sure transparency's there. I think that's spot on. And I think, Mayor, to your other question, I think, so transparency, I think the transparency piece is great. I think the benefits are off. I think we just need to go back to the core ones that we had. And the other thing I'll just say is on the caps, absolutely not. Here's the thing, the market will decide that. I think our impact fees apply tens of thousands of dollars to every single family home. They don't place that cost on every single family home. The market wouldn't bear it, right? The builder will buy it down, or they want us to put it on that house. It's not going to work that way. If, if they build a development that has an assessment of $9,000 next to an assessment of a neighborhood that's got a property tax of $1,500, I can almost assure you that that developer or that builder is going to buy that down, because they're not going to be able to compete. The market won't bear it. It just won't. It's not going to work that way. I, I think we, we're trying to get into the weeds of what the market will, will handle for us, and I just don't think we need to be doing that. I really don't. I, I just think it's, it's more than what we need to probably handle for ourselves. That's my two cents.
Alderman Baggett.
Transparency, I'm good with. We'll start with, let me make sure I understand, section one, impact fees, or this is, these public benefits shall be provided, excuse me, they have to provide, they still have to provide the, the public benefits that directly advance the specific goals in our, our plan. So does that mean that they still have to do under this first section, impact fees are not included in this?
Well, impact fees are.
I mean, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be putting the impact fees into the IDD?
Well, impact fees by state law can be included.
So we're saying we want the impact fees in the IDD too, in this, I don't see that anywhere mentioned in this policy.
You can allow it.
That's in the state, that's in the state law.
We can allow it. That's in the state law. We haven't addressed it, though.
Tell us what you'd like to do with that.
I want, I want to look at what that means, because here, it, look, this is all a math problem. It's just a, it's a math problem. And math teacher, it's an equation, and it's either going to be an X, Y, Z, and the equal is going to be the same no matter what, and the equal is either going to be spread out over the entire population of Franklin, because these improvements are going to have to be done at some point, or they're going to be put into the, on the front loaded, an impact fee, and paid for by the city, or it's going to be put in the IDD, and maybe we get something a little bit more out of the developer, like roads before the development, like roads, like infrastructure before development? You know, we ran on that four years ago, some of us, and that's what we've been trying to do. That's actually how this, one of the main reasons why this started, is we looked at our capital investment plan and said, let's find some other creative ways to fund some of these infrastructure projects off, off the site of the other developments. So it's, it's just, it's a math, it really is, and the market is going to affect that. So the caps, I'm not, I'm not, I think the market's going to work one day or the other. If you, if you put, if you're an economics major, you put a cap one place, it's going to affect the market somewhere else, and you're going to have a, an offset market. So I'm not sure that I agree with that, but there's still more questions to ask. All right. Construction, all right, number one, you asked for feedback on that. One percent of the funded value of the development district, how are we going, who's going to decide what that is? The value of the development district. Who decides the two to one and the three to one? Who decides the one?
Well, that's two different, two different things, okay? The, the 1% here is up to the developer of what they want funded, and the 1% would be in addition to these community benefits.
Right, but I'm trying to go with the value.
So if it's 50, if the, if the, the IDD will include roads and sewer infrastructure, that equals 50 million.
that equals $50 million, they need to put 1% towards these benefits outside of that $50 million.
So is this 1% of the lean amount, of the, of the ratio?
It's 1% of the funding, of the funding of the IDD.
Right, so that would be the lean...
How much you're getting, the, the ratio.
Is the lean amount? So 1% of the lean amount, which is the, the ratio I was talking about, is the one in the ratio. So, right, yes, one, the one in the ratio.
1% of that, 1% of the...
1% of the ratio. So if you have a $100 million IDD, we're asking them to do $1 million over what's required for roads and infrastructure that is not directly supportive of their property.
Right.
All right? Second, the third one, second one is 1% of the value that goes to, excuse me, I had them backwards. The, the second one is the roads. The third is a high quality placemaking as demonstrated through our compliance with our version of our city, city development standards. So does that mean if there's one modification of standard that this would not, this would not qualify? Like, if, if a development asks for one modification of standard, would that then disqualify them from this checkbox?
You mean the high quality architectural standards? Well, there, that is one that is subjective, that has the alderman to make that decision. We have development standards. That determination is their...
To your question, no.
No.
It would not.
No, that's good.
I mean, that's a decision you still get to make in the context of approving a development, and it is a judgment call that what's being brought forward to you goes above and beyond the base standard. That doesn't mean you can't approve modifications or do things that you normally do, but you're making a judgment that they're raising the bar in terms of the quality of development.
Historic structures...
So that's fairly subjective.
And I'm moving quick because it's 10 minutes over, and I was, you know, we've just been, this is very important. When, historic structures must be preserved, should be the fourth one. Add that to this.
If there, if there are in the development area...
It says when applicable.
If applicable, yeah.
If, yeah, I want to make sure that it's very clear that there's no option, if there's historic structure.
Yeah. You got to...
Make that very clear. I could, you know... Well, they can come up with a good way to define it, but I don't want historic structures. I mean, there's a thousand, I was at the historic thing today, the preservation plan committee, and there's a lot of ways to find historic, but I want it to be synonymous with that plan. Public art, I'm not, I would love that. I don't think that's moving the needle on why we're doing this. Number two is the land dedication for public use. Yeah, we don't do schools, so I, I don't understand why we would be giving this kind of, you know, I know the greater community needs it, or would need it, but...
We're just trying to give credit for that.
Understand...
They provide that benefit. It's great to have a school site in West Haven.
It is great to have a school.
Give them credit for it.
But I guess from, from where we started on this, which was how do we help get infrastructure in and paid for by the people it's affecting and not everyone else? That would actually help the county...
Well, I guess it's a, it's, it's a, it's an option.
It's an option.
It's not a requirement. You're trying to provide a broad, and, and in this specific case, you're, you only have to do two or more. So it's just creating...
Options.
Various ones that might fit a specific development.
Choose your own adventure.
Exactly.
Understood.
Well said.
All right. The next, the last thing, two things, and then I'm finished. Long-term maintenance and operational agreements. I'm interested in learning more about this Mela-Ruse law in California. You might be familiar with it. We got, so the, this is something I've heard, you know, we've had, we have some great Californians moving here to Tennessee, and I got to meet some the other night. And they brought this up, you know, in conversation, and I, he was a mortgage broker, and brought this up, and, and some of the issues that came up with that, and how maybe it had been abused out there, and some of the impacts that it had, and, and you know, he said was the long-term maintenance and costs associated with some of this that, that it, that your, your infrastructure, or your, the city maintenance requirements long-term don't keep up with the fact that these things can now happen because of economic, you know, incentive or disincentives. And so then you end up where the city is now having additional long-term maintenance costs that, that really can't be identified on the front end, or, or hard to identify. So I really want to look at that. You know, I don't know how we're working on that as far as long-term maintenance for some of these things that we've talked, I mean, we, we long-term have to maintain roads. We long-term have to maintain sidewalks. We long-term have to maintain all these things, public parks and that kind of thing. So I want to look at that piece on this number two is really important to me, and I think that needs to be worked into this somehow, some way, so that the, the IDD itself or somehow is funding and helping the city fund long-term maintenance and not just the upfront costs. What we don't want is to have some just high quality, good-looking things that happen, and infrastructure built before development in these areas, like we've wanted to do, financed by that, those people and not all the taxpayers, which is what we want. We want growth to pay for itself more and more, which is what this chief aim is, is, is what we're talking about here. This is a way for the development to actually pay for itself because the people that live there pay for it. Not existing homeowners. Everybody hear that? Everybody listen at home, on the radio, wherever you're listening? This is not actually a tax, it's an assessment put forward by, if you decide to move here from Sheboygan, Wisconsin, and move into XYZ neighborhood, you're the new people, and you're building, or you're buying that house, and you have to pay for that infrastructure in addition to what, what supports you.
You'll wind up...
I'm winding up. I am winding up, I know. Thank you, Mayor. But this is important, and we are squeezed for time. I would tell you that we need to look into some of the downfalls, but I don't like the But I have some other concerns that you've heard about. So I, I think the cap is kind of like, for me right now, I think there's still some more work to be done on refining this to get it dialed in. I hate to keep pushing it, but, but the cap, I think, because just knowing the math, the math will work the cap out, but, but I think there's still some more things here I'd like to look at.
Okay. I've got three public speakers, but I want to make a few quick comments. And first of all, the staff has worked really, really hard to come up with this document, and there's a lot of information there, and the idea of all that information that is gathered has helped us digest it and come up with what we think is workable. Some of us were on this board with assessment districts for sewer, and so we may have a little bit of a bitter taste in our mouth for some of that, so that may prejudice just a little bit to start out with. But I think ultimately where we want to be is a board decision that can come, that's based on some guidelines, and avoid us being in a, in a political predicament where we can be viewed as playing politics with some of this. To me, the, I, I don't think we're ever going to have a perfect black and white. There's always going to be a little gray in it. It is a financing tool for developers, and developers are going to have a better deal. They're going to be able to get a better rate because of the bonds that we're issuing, and good. Long-term, I'm looking to have some leverage to get infrastructure that I want. I'm particularly interested in having a tool that I can leverage getting some missing middle housing. I'm not sure that 10% number is high enough. You know, that's, on a 200-unit development, that's 20 houses. That's nothing. I like the idea of preserving open space, and also the fact that we have some leverage. We can say, we want a better development, we want higher quality. So on the cap, I'm more confused tonight on the cap than I was whenever I got here, and I want to better understand what that cap really is and what that means. You know, so I, I want to learn more about that. I'm going to ask Rachel Blackhurst and Rick Rosenberg and Craig Hoover. By the way, Craig, you have the worst handwriting I've ever seen. If I didn't know you, I would wonder who this was. Rachel?
Yeah, that came from a doctor, so wow.
Two minutes each, please, and if you want to make it one, I would be elated.
I'll talk really fast. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Boardman and Alderman. Rachel Blackhurst with the Commercial Real Estate Development Association. I think we all mentioned this. It's very exciting to be here tonight, to be at this phase of talking about this policy, an idea that started with this board. I think all the more reason to make sure we get this right. That being said, we as the development community have some concerns with this. As many of you mentioned, it's very restrictive, and our concern is that it's not going to be workable, and it's, developers are going to opt not to use it because it's just too cumbersome. So if we can think of a policy that will, yes, incentivize good design, building much-needed infrastructure, but will also incentivize the developer to participate in this tool, so thinking about ways to make, to consult with the development community, bring in some of the projects that we know are going to be coming down the pipe to look at some of these requirements and what they could realistically incorporate. Couple things, I think you all said this, so I'll restate it. We really hope that you'll trust, you know, market, market forces to work on things like caps. And also, commence state statute, at the end of the day, does give you the authority to say yes or no to any given project. So something you're uncomfortable with, you're not obligated to say yes. So thank you for your time. Again, excited to be a part of this conversation.
Thank you, guys. My name's Craig Hoover. I'm the developer of Armistead, which is anxiously awaiting a decision on this matter because we're, we're ready to go, and we're, you know, we, we really believe this will be a great tool. I, I don't also want to, don't want to overstate what the gift is. It is absolutely a great financing tool, but we, I've run this, I've modeled this out every which way, and it's a basically six and a half percent money. And that's, that's, that's what's the way it kind of all shakes out. And so, yeah, that's cheaper than the eight to 9% money that, that we can get out there in the, you know, in the open market, but it's not a, it's not a gift. And absolutely, the caps are market-based. So the, 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 the two to one ratio, so if I, if I have a lot that is valued at $100,000, then I can put a lean on it for $50,000. But I'm not going to pass $50,000 worth of a lean on to a, to a, to an end user. I'm going to use that financing, and then at closing, I'm going to pay down probably $45,000 of that, and then drop, you know, $5,000, whichever, because I'm not going to be able to compete with the other developments that are, that are next to me that, if, if I have to put that on there. Again, it is really restrictive. If, if we're asked to be doing this at the development plan stage, we don't know what 1% is going, what a 1% impact is going to be for public art or for, you know, extra stuff. We just don't know at that stage. And, and so it's, it's, it, I believe, I believe the intent of the policy is absolutely right. The developments that you guys approved for this should absolutely mirror the values that this board has and where we're, and where you want to go. But I also think we should let the market do it. And one other thing I would say that, and, you know, to yours, Mr. Mayor, about the missing middle, I'm not sure the attainable housing language really, or the affordable housing language really accomplishes that. I think what it says is, is that you're deed restricting certain, a certain amount of housing to be affordable to certain people. It doesn't say anything about townhomes, size of home, or, you know, or a variety of sizes. So I'm not sure it accomplishes that. I want, I believe that should be a criteria. We should be, we should be going after exceptional developments, or affordable developments, or developments that create some benefit, particularly connectivity, infrastructure connectivity. And so I think those are really, really important. But I think this board should give itself the opportunity to, to, to make up its mind when it sees these coming, and we'd like to come soon. Thanks.
You get to finish it out, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman. Rick Rosenberg, I'm the managing principal for Development Planning and Financing Group. Our business is working with these kind of districts around the country. I personally have overseen over $1.1 billion of land secured financings, whatever acronym you want to call it, in the state of Texas, Georgia, North Carolina, Utah, and other places. Our firm has been involved with over $17 billion. We have, in 35 years, we have never seen a city have to write a check because of a problem with one of these districts. If there's that, if there are costs incurred by the city, they are compensated through the annual administration costs. If there's a foreclosure process, the first dollar from a foreclosure go to pay any city costs incurred. This is a no cost to the city. Yes, it is a benefit to the developer, but as Mr. Hoover, for whom I hope to have the opportunity to assist, it's not free money. It is a cost, it's a burden. If the developer chooses to pass an assessment on that is too large, nobody will buy the property, and he will suffer. Not the city, he will suffer. We agree that a policy is important. What we would, our experience in working with, and we've worked with a lot of policies in a lot of jurisdictions, it is best done in conjunction with the development community. And quite frankly, where it's been most successful is where they identify a project, or a project comes to the door, and you, you work through it, and then you identify your policy. Doing a policy in a vacuum, what's going to happen is the first developer who then comes to the door is going to ask for waivers, and then it defeats the purpose of the policy. Policies are objectives, not prescriptions. So we, we want, we want to work with the city of Franklin. We're talking to a number of developers. We're already working with a number of developers in the Nashville area, and we're excited about the opportunity. We, we know that this is a great tool. It will drive better projects and better, and that'll have economic benefits to the city. We, we can work through the questions and issues, but it, I just think it's got to be done in a way that is market-driven. I don't know if anyone would ever be willing to pay five times your tax rate in an annual payment. What we've talked about is passing through a part and paying off the balance. It's a project financing tool.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll see you in 10 minutes. We're adjourned.